Members, good morning. We're from the forum. Second session of the Special Finance Committee. The meeting is scheduled from nine AM to twelve twenty-five and we will have three sessions today. Please keep the Zoom video function and show your face throughout the meeting. And the microphone will be unmuted under my instruction and please use the virtual background function to choose the color for your constituency. The purpose of the meeting is to consider draft estimates twenty twenty-two, twenty-three by the administration to ensure that the money source will not exceed what is required for implementing the relevant policies. May I read my members that questions must be directly related to the expanded draft expenditure? And please quote the reply serial number on the top right-hand corner of the paper. And if the administration cannot provide any answer, please provide a supplementary reply in writing for forwarding to the secretariat. And I will determine the speaking time of each member depending on the members waiting to speak. To be fair, please clear the raise hand function on Zoom for all members. For members who intend to speak, use the raise hand feature of Zoom to indicate your wish. Let me welcome the Secretary for Financial Services and the Treasury and his team to answer members related to Financial Services Bureau. Secretary, opening remarks, please. Secretary, you're not coming through yet. Thank you. Chairman and members, good morning. I will briefly introduce the estimates of expenditure for financial services and our key areas of work in the coming year. Now for estimates of expenditure, the allocation to the financial services branch and departments under its purview for twenty twenty-two, twenty-three is about two point one billion and this represent a reduction of zero point two seven billion dollars over the revised estimate of last year. In the coming year, we have to focus on safeguarding Hong Kong's financial stability and on the other hand, continue to enhance financial cooperation of the mainland by introducing a series of new initiatives for promoting market development having regard to the national fourteenth five-year plan so as to enhance Hong Kong's status as an international financial center. With regard to safeguarding our financial stability with our resilient regulatory regime, robust risk management measures and ample foreign exchange reserves, Hong Kong's financial system has demonstrated resilience despite the impact of COVID- nineteen. And Joe, political tensions as well as a wide range of global uncertainties of the past few years or so. The linked exchange rate system and various facets of the markets have been functioning in an orderly manner without any abnormal signs of capital flow. We'll continue to strive to maintain financial stability for Hong Kong. There are three major areas on promoting market development. First, we will assess the industry in seizing new opportunities in the financial market on fintech. To encourage the financial industry to innovate, we launched the fintech proof of concept subsidy scheme last year, which has received overwhelming response from the industry. We propose allocating another ten billion dollars for launching a new round of the scheme to share and expand the scope of eligibility for receiving subsidy. Also strive to provide a one-step platform for the industry to conduct trial of cross-bank fintech projects concurrently in the mainland and Hong Kong and explore expanding the function of commercial data interchange. On green and sustainable finance, the government will continue to issue green bonds totaling about four point five US billion dollars or equivalent this year and will lower the minimum loan size threshold from two hundred million dollars to one hundred million dollars in respect of applications for subsidies for covering external review costs under the Green and Sustainable Finance Grant Scheme launched last year. On manpower training, nurturing and building up Hong Kong's manpower reserve is pivotal to seizing above two new opportunities on fintech on green and sustainable finance. In this regard, we'll launch several schemes to provide subsidies for training and attaining relevant professional qualifications. The second front is exploring further development while consolidating the existing advantages. On securities market, the reform to the listing regime in twenty eighteen has brought both significant increase in market capitalization and trading volume in the Hong Kong securities market over the past few years. We'll continue to enhance the listing mechanism and strive to balance between regulation and market development. Hong Kong X implemented a series of measures in January this year to enhance listing of overseas enterprises with a view to welcome the return of China concept stocks. Meanwhile, Hong Kong X also launched a new listing route for special purpose acquisition companies. As the next step, we will examine the revision of listing requirements to meet the fundraising needs of large-scale advanced technology enterprises, which will require substantial capital for research and development, but are currently not qualified for listing without the required profit and trading record or furthering development Hong Kong to a deeper and broader fundraising platform. We also implement the mutual access of exchange traded funds as soon as possible and enhance explore more risk management products. We'll progressively implement the recommendations of the String Committee on Bond Market Development in Hong Kong for the enhanced function of the central market, money markets unit and explore the development of an electronic bond trading platform. We'll issue no less than fifteen billion dollars of high bond, thirty-five billion dollars of silver bond and ten billion dollars of retail green bond this year. The Hong Kong Mortgage Corporation Limited is expected to offer infrastructure financial securitization products with a total value of four hundred fifty million US dollars in this financial year to institutional investors. For asset and wealth management, we have proposed to provide tax concession for eligible family investment management entities managed by single-family offices. We are consulting the industry on the detailed proposal. On the EMPF platform, it enters the critical building spirit stage this year. Despite the mega scale and complexity of the project, we'll work with the Mandatory Profit and Fund Schemes Authority at the EMPF Platform Company Limited to continue to take forward the project in full steam and strive to complete the project and schedule so as to create room for fee reduction to scheme members as soon as possible. The third major front on promoting market development is to strengthen the function as the offshore RMB business hub and strive to enhance the offshore RMB business ecosystem in Hong Kong. As regards allowing stocks traded via the southbound trading of stock connect to be denominated in RMB, the working group has completed the feasibility study. The next step is to discuss with the regulatory authorities and relevant organizations in mainland in this regard what the yes will be in touch with these US and relevant sectors. The government is also prepared to allow supporting measures such as waiving the stock duty on stock transfers paid by market makers and their transactions so as to increase market liquidity and facilitate trading. On enriching the spectrum of RMB financial products, the Shenzhen Municipal People's Government issued offshore RMB municipal government bonds totaling five billion RMB in Hong Kong, including green bonds. This is the first time a municipal government, people's government issues bonds in Hong Kong. Writing on this successful issuance will continue to encourage more diversified RMB wealth management products and bonds to be issued in Hong Kong, thereby promoting the internationalization of RMB. Finally, in view of the impacts of the latest wave of the pandemic in various sectors and the labor market, we've extended for one year the application period for the hundred percent personal loan guarantee scheme introduced last year and implemented new enhancement measures for the PLGS. My colleagues, I will be happy to answer questions from members. Thank you. I'll read out the order. And also, Li Wenyan and thank you. Wang Yun San and Wang Yumen. Four minutes each. May I remind you that to allow as many members to ask questions as possible, four minutes will include questions and answers, including replies from officials. And when time is almost up, I hope officials can round up their reply within a few seconds. Mr. Rock Chen, four minutes. Thank you, Chair. I'd like to follow up. On reply oh one eight and oh one nine. I'm pleased to hear from the administration that close to two million, two billion dollars in a green I bond will be issued and set by the administration. No less than thirty-five billion dollars of green bonds will be issued this year with interest hikes by a fat reserve. I'd like to know whether in the retail green bond to be issued will be the guaranteed interest be increased? And the second question is related to reply oh one nine. The administration says that it will continue to grasp the enormous green finance opportunities presented by the Greater Bay Area Development and also to provide subsidy for enterprises to issue green and sustainable bonds in Hong Kong and to lower the subsidy of from two hundred million dollars to one hundred million dollars to cover the external review cost. I'd like to know the number of such enterprises who have made use of the scheme and how the government will attract more relevant institutions to come to Hong Kong to start their business so that we can have a more complete retail green bond ecosystem in Hong Kong. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chen, for your question regarding the pricing. It depends on the market. Not long ago, we intended to launch a retail green bond, but because of the pandemic, we have deferred the program and we have readjusted the interest. Why? I cannot guarantee whether the dividend will be high or yield to high. It depends on the market. As regards the retail green bond program, the Hong Kong MA has received a lot of applications and perhaps I can defer to the MPFA to supplement. Thank you, Chair. Regarding a retail green bond, very soon, we will have the first issuance of retail green bond. For promotion in this regard, we are working on two fronts. First, the government will continue to issue green bonds and we have in total issued more than seven billion dollars, US dollar, US dollars of green bond. This is very useful in building up a yield for green bonds in Hong Kong. And the second thing is how to expand the market. We are working on a few areas. I said by Mr. Rock Chen and also the secretary, we have got a subsidy scheme which started in May last year. The Green and Sustainable Finance Grant Scheme will last for three years. As of February this year, we have approved over fifty applications. And the amount of subsidies is about sixty-five million dollars. It's quite obvious that with the grant scheme, the interest for issuing green bonds, it's not just a green bonds, but application for green loans from banks have seen growth for green bonds issued last year and green financing from banks last year grew by fourfold compared with the year before last. So you can see how useful the grant scheme has been. Perhaps I pause here first. All right, Mr. Lightong Kwok. Thank you, Chair. My question is FSTB oh four nine and that is the SME financing scheme. Under the scheme, the SMEs can apply for eighty, ninety percent and the interest rate is three point seven five to zero point seven four. That is about that rate is much lower than other schemes, which could be up to twenty percent. So this has been very helpful. I don't know whether the secretary has noted that a few days ago, there was a feature, a TV feature that has there are intermediaries in society saying that they can help people to make use of the SME financing guarantee scheme to take out loans for other investment or even for buying properties. Let you know how the administration can prevent successful borrowers. They are SMEs. How can you ensure that the money they borrow is mainly for the business operation and not for other investment? Because if their investment is lost, then the government will have to underwrite the loans.
Secretary, thank you for your question. You're correct, Mr. Li. We hope that during the pandemic, we'll be able to support or assist our enterprises. But for any deviations, we have been working hard towards this end. I'd like to defer to Mr. Lee from the Hong Kong Mortgage Corporation Limited to take this question. The design of the SME financing guarantee scheme has measures to ensure that the money will be used for the SMEs. They must show their eligibility and that their business has been affected by the pandemic before they can borrow any money. The banks will also adopt their professionalism in vetting such applications. When the applications reach us, we will also conduct due diligence. There are also measures in which we need the SMEs to provide personal guarantee. Let's say if they invest the money elsewhere, any losses incurred will be borne by the SMEs. Therefore, it actually has a deterrent effect. I have to remind applicants that you do not need any intermediaries in applying for the scheme. We have seen situations in which intermediaries take profit by applying for the SMEs. So we have to once again reiterate that there's no use to go through intermediaries in application. Well, I hope that you'll be able to make this public or at least advertise it so people will know. Well, I didn't hear very clearly your question. Can we allow Mr. Li to repeat the question? Chairman, I really hope that the administration will, based on his response, to clarify this publicly and to point out to SMEs not to believe in these intermediaries. All right, I'm sure they will do that. Next, Professor Nelson.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Secretary. I wish you all good health. Well, I have a couple of questions in response to my question, which is FSTB FS oh two three two oh two five in relation to the China stock, China concept stock. And you have already explained to us a listing, a secondary listing, and I see that there have been some public information on that and we can see that there are many China concept stocks coming into Hong Kong and we see that they now choose to return. So for the dual primary listing, I want to see whether the Secretaries and Fiduci's Commission will follow up because I see that I just want to look at the numbers to see the numbers for secondary listing. And then in the bond market with the government, consider on how we can realize the advantage of Hong Kong's RMB market and so that we'll be able to have a better asset management. And in relation to training for banks, I would like to know the one thousand five hundred vacancies that you have talked about. I'm not sure the number of financial practitioners are. Can you actually tell us more about the one thousand five hundred places that are to be offered? Thank you for your questions. On secondary listing or dual primary, all along, we have had many presidents. Therefore, it is not something new to our market. I'll say whether it's secondary or dual primary, we do have our criteria and our mechanism. Therefore, rest assured that we do have the capacity to take in these companies. Professor Lam is correct. The bond market will be huge in the future. There would be many green bonds and therefore the government is also working hard on that and also on the bond connect with a southbound trading. It has been very helpful to the market and therefore we are leveraging on this in our future development. The Financial Secretary is leading a steering committee, including stakeholders in the industry to try to set up a strategy for our future development. The report is not yet announced or published. We are still in the preparation period, but we are in a very advanced preparation stage. I hope to hear more from Professor Lam and other legislative counselors on this end. On the plans from the bank, I will defer to Selina. Thank you. The pilot scheme on training subsidy for fintech practitioners began in the banking industry. We are looking into reimbursement of eighty percent of tuition fees. Well, based on our previous experience, we estimate that the number of spaces offered will be around one thousand five hundred from one thousand three hundred. But of course, we could review this along the way. Our preliminary plan is to offer one thousand five hundred spaces. Thank you. Next, Mr. Chen Zhenying.
Thank you, Chairman. In order to strengthen our financial positioning, we must enhance confidence in our market and to attract more overseas talents or outside talents. So I would be speaking in relation to FSTB FS oh five five oh four six and oh fourteen. Well, we do not have enough activities right now. Other than the activities listed out by the secretary, do you have any plans to visit other countries? Or because actually the Financial Services Development Council plays a very important role. Would you also lead delegations for visits elsewhere? In the meeting, a couple of days ago, we did discuss that on talent. In reply, serial number oh four six, we have seen many subventions for schools. Oh, there are many new programs, but do we really see a huge number of these students after graduation to really to join the financial market because this is very important? The Permanent Secretary has just now told us that the places offered per year for a pilot program is one thousand five hundred. For the financial practitioners who join such programs, how many of them really do join the industry after they complete their program? All right, let me try to reply to the first question. You are correct. We must continue to promote ourselves. The FSDC is very clear about the framework and there are many talents and elites in the industry. We are working on it from various channels. We do have ETO overseas and I myself during the pandemic would liaise with them on Zoom to hold activities online. Well, we see that virtual asset is of interest. We see many European companies that are interested in that. And I would like to thank members for supporting our proposal. And second, on tax concessions, we have worked on some private equity funds and there would also be tax concessions for family management offices because we see that many of them have talked about the family investment management entities that we do provide a very good tax concession. So we'd like members to help us promote that. We not only need to promote it overseas, we also have to promote it on the mainland. Therefore, we would take a multi-pronged approach to work on that. And Mr. Chen, I'm very happy to work with you on that. In relation to the effectiveness of our work, I'd like Selina to follow up on that. Thank you. Well, it is really very popular and it can attract financial practitioners to join our programs. We also welcome those who are not in the industry to join. We are also going to discuss this further in the panel in around May. Next. Dr. Ten Yueheng. Dr. Ten, please turn on your microphone. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you. A good morning, Secretary. I'd like to follow up on FSTB FS oh four five. There are three points I'd like to raise. First, in May of twenty twenty-one, a three-year green and sustainable finance grant scheme was introduced. Estimated funding was two hundred fifty-five million. As of February this year, approved fifty applications, reaching sixty-five million. Well, how many applications have you approved as of today? Because I do not see a very obvious result. We do not see a very popular response from the market. It doesn't seem to be too popular. What is the reason for that? Secondly, so you're also reducing the loan size from two hundred million to one hundred million. So what is the market response? And thirdly, we see that there is actually no difference between a loan and also the and also the subsidy. So if the cap is at zero point eight million, so it seems not to be too significant. And it wouldn't really affect, I mean, it wouldn't really attract issuers to issue green bonds in Hong Kong. Thank you for your question. Well, on your three questions, I would like Selina to answer these questions. Thank you, Dr. Ten. On the green and sustainable finance grant scheme, you were correct. From February till today, as of April eighth, we have seen an increase in the number of application. There are around seventy odd applications and we have approved around sixty-five million in subsidies. Each application is on average about one point one million. Although the pay seems to be slow, this actually is quite a popular scheme. On the eight hundred thousand cap. so the scheme would subsidize the full cost of eligible expenses per bond issuance or loan. Although we haven't adjusted the cap. We have received inquiries about the application procedures for loans at below 200 million. And we have now lowered it to 100 million so that more SMEs will be able to apply. We can and we will maintain regular contact with the industry to see how we can improve the scheme.
Dr. Priscilla Lo. Well, since Dr. Lo is not here, Mr. Qiu Takan, thank you, Chair. I'd like to ask about reply number 020. My own question is proof of concept. I think this is a very innovative scheme, 160 applications have been received, but only 93 have been approved and it's less than 60%. And I'd like to know, Dr. Priscilla Lo, can you please unmute your microphone first? You'll come next, Mr. Qiu, thank you. I'd like to know the reason for the low success rate. Is it because the administration doesn't understand the sector? Or was it because of a lack of publicity? Now, 93 projects have been successful. I'd like to know how many of them are from the academia? How many from the industry and how many from R and D institutions? Among the 93 projects approved, I'd like to know how many of them have become real projects? How many have received orders? Now, it's mentioned that the next round of the scheme will have some enhancements. Have you ever consulted the sector to enhance our fintech infrastructure? I think this is a very good scheme. Now you have increased $10 million to the whole scheme. I'd like to know when you will further raise the subsidy. Thank you, let me share your recent experience with the proof of concept project. And then that can be supplemented afterwards. Now, 93 projects have been approved, ranging from wealth tech, rec tech, insert tech and payments, and also cross-boundary data analysis. Now, for cross-boundary projects, including GBA, yes, they have been supported. And the reasons for rejecting the applications? Because many of the applications are quite quite good, but then because of the ceiling in our funding, they have been rejected. So therefore, we have injected further money into the scheme. As regards our public publicity and also consultation with the industry, well, the cyber port and the administration have been promoting the scheme as regards how the projects can be sustainable and commercialized. Now, once a project is included in the proof of concept scheme, they are already halfway to success. According to many finance companies, now they said that without the scheme is hard for them to go into financial institutions because of many illegal constraints. Now, they are not too worried about the money they can receive. Rather, they like the trademark of proof of concept scheme. So we are going to launch an enhanced version. Hopefully, we can help the sector even more. Ms. Yan, well, the project has been a success. We have already exhausted our funding of $10 million. So it's a very good experience. I think it's also very encouraging to the industry. So after the first round, we believe in the second round of the scheme, we're going to approve a more a higher, a bigger diversity of projects. What about the percentage of commercialization? Now, we don't have such data yet, but as I said, in May and June, we are going to give a full account to the panel and will provide the relevant figures afterwards. Dr. Priscilla Lo. Dr. Priscilla Lo. Then we'll skip her first. Mr. Johnny, Dr. Johnny. Thank you. I'd like to follow up on my own question. 043 and also 015, a question by another member. My question is about the GBA Investment Fund. I asked about the strategy and according to the reply, it will enhance Hong Kong's competitiveness. Will you, at what stage of development will you consider? When it comes to enterprises you're going to invest in? Can you give us details? And the second question is about family offices. I'd like to know whether in terms of STEM duty, now if Hong Kong family offices own overseas assets, can they be waived? Or they given STEM duty concession in transactions to encourage more families to come to Hong Kong so that we can be a center of overseas assets? Thank you. First, investment of the GBA Investment Fund. Well, we have a three-tier structure. The first is chaired by the Financial Secretary, that is under the Hong Kong Growth Portfolio. It will work on the framework and the requirements. And the second tier is the Investment Committee chaired by myself, responsible for selecting general partners, GP. Because we want to have this at arms-length arrangement so that the government will not be directly involved in the choice of enterprises or sectors. So the third tier involves the Hong Kong MA, which has experience in investment in private equity funds. So the Hong Kong MA will help us to first list out, screen out some GP and then for my committee to choose. So the GBA Investment Fund will have a similar arrangement in the selection of GPs. You're asked about the projects we are going to invest in. Now, in our discussion, it's very clear that at the government's level, we do not just look for financial return. We want strategic returns as well because we are spending more than $20 billion and we want the scope to be wider. We want to invest in projects with a Hong Kong nexus. So when the Investment Committee makes a decision, it would require prospective projects to explain to us their undertaking, their commitments and how they can ensure that their investment in projects has a Hong Kong nexus. For instance, will these enterprises be based in Hong Kong or engage in businesses related to Hong Kong? With regard to STEM duty concessions, perhaps because of time constraints, will discuss this after the meeting? Mr. Li Wei Wang. Mr. Robert Lee, thank you. Chair, I've got two questions. FSTB 031 and FSTB 037 is about the Wealth Management Connect Scheme and also securitization of bonds. Now, we want more products to be included under the Wealth Management Connect Scheme. According to the administration's reply, regulators of three aspects will be involved. I do understand the challenges and considerations, but I'd like to have a timetable. I'd like to know whether any meeting has been held, any concrete plan to promote the development of here? And also the retail development of bonds. I understand that this is in line with the sector's view. We have talked about developing bonds available for retail investors. There are only 61 bonds available for retail investors and the total amount is above 130 odd billion Hong Kong dollars. When members of the public have a greater demand for regular returns in investment, can you give us more information? How you can ensure more retail investors can invest in bonds? Thank you very much for your question. First, on Wealth Management Connect Scheme. And the second is on developing the bond, retail bond market. As I said, under the FS, there is a steering committee in mapping out the future direction for us. Now, we are going to issue retail green bonds very soon. We should not just develop the market, but we have to ensure that the sector can develop their business. We believe the retail green bond issuance will benefit the sector as well. Well, as regards some bond market developments, I think that there can be various ways and means to achieve this. We should allow members of the public to take part in bond investment. Selina once came to the panel to explain how MPF schemes have relaxed so that we have already relaxed the regulations on investment in products on the MPF. So that after due risk assessment, investors can then decide whether to invest in bond. Because our population is aging, we want products with fixed income. We will do that in Hong Kong and will also work with other markets to do that. And the other question is WMC, Wealth Management Connect Scheme. We have made a steady start and we are now progressing smoothly. The important thing is whether there can be more participants. Perhaps Hong Kong MA can supplement. Hong Kong MA. Yes, we are doing that. We understand Mr. Li's question, participation by the securities sector. We have a lot of products and then we have designed the system together with the mainland. We understand the aspirations of the sector. What we see, whether we can explore more channels and allow security brokers and dealers to take part. This is a consensus in society and we will put this request to the mainland afterwards.
Mr. Yim Kong, thank you, Chairman. Good morning, Secretary. I'd like to ask about FSTP FS 058 and 034. I'd like to two questions. According to figures given, that we can see that the average family income in Hong Kong is 35,100. And drawing reference from OECD's definition, middle-class families account for about 40% of all households in Hong Kong and actually contribute hugely to the tax pay in Hong Kong. But then during the pandemic, many families have been receiving less salary and they're actually spending more than what they earn. However, the government has not come up with enough measures to assist these middle-class families to ride out the pandemic. So do you have more targeted measures to help them? Such as providing them with a higher tax concession for dependent parents and families. The government focuses on attracting talent into Hong Kong, tech talent and other talents and actually also contribute hugely to Hong Kong society. However, because many of them are not permanent residents and therefore they are not able to receive consumption voucher from the administration. These talents need to pay rent and they cannot reunite with their families. I believe that during the pandemic, we should provide more care for these talents who are unable to return to their own homes because that will attract more talents to come to work in Hong Kong after the pandemic. I hope that the FS will really look into who you're covering in your assistance and to also allow these to receive the subsidies given by the government during the pandemic, even though they are not permanent residents. Secretary, thank you, Mr. Yim. Well, this might involve arrangements on consumption vouchers. We are going to have officers to specifically talk about this later. So let me first answer this question in a general manner first. We actually do attach huge importance to the middle class because they're a very important group. And under the pandemic, they, together with other people as well, are also facing many financial difficulties. You mentioned the consumption vouchers and that to be eligible, you must be a permanent resident. However, for many other schemes such as salaries, tax, conception and also each household receiving electric bill subsidy. These are also measures to help people ride out the pandemic. We try to come up with strategies to support everyone. It's just that you benefit from different schemes. On the consumption voucher, we can talk about this in detail at a later time. Next, Mr. Bill Tang.
Thank you, Chairman. My question is in relation to FSTP FS 005 on tax concession to go for annuity. You're talking about 12 billion involving 270,000 people. And the, we're talking about about 6 billion on the voluntary contribution. I am very concerned with retirement protection. very concerned with retirement protection. The MPFA has been doing quite well with the EMPF platform and we know the fees of the four hundred MPFs and we know exactly whether they are a three-year tenor, five-year tenor, or seven-year tenor and all the risks. Then for the annuity premium tax deduction scheme is actually not very transparent. It's very difficult to compare because there is no one consistent platform to make a comparison. Would you set up also a information platform for the annuity premium so that the public will know exactly the expenses and the fees? Because many private annuity premium is only one percent to three percent. I hope that the secretary will be able to address my question.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Tang. I'd like to thank Mr. Tang for providing us with many views on our platform, on our e-platform. So that we'll be able to optimize the platform for the public. We want beneficiaries and also employees to be able to make a comparison on which scheme they would go for, to make it more transparent so that they would be, make a better informed decision. We actually, we do need to make a certain disclosure, for example, to give information on the deduction arrangement, the percentage. But do we really need a platform? I think that this can some, this is something we can discuss in the next step. Currently, we need to try to clarify all the unclear understandings of the arrangement. And Mr. Tang, we can follow up on this after the meeting to see where we can make improvements. Members of the public, well, even me, know that we are not looking for a high number of products. We actually need to have a better understanding of each product instead. We will follow up later. Chairman, I hope that you understand that, well, yes, you actually receive less of two point three billion. Well, I'm sure that the secretary has heard your views. Mr. Edmund Wong, thank you, Chairman. Secretary, I'd like to ask about FSTP FS zero five zero on my own question. So I want to ask about the fees after the Hong Kong Institute of Civil Public Accounts to the FRC of the powers of issuance of certificates and registration. So the government has committed to exempt these fees in the first of implementation and in order to go for this new arrangement, the administration has actually allocated four hundred million and that there's also for this reform. So right now, the additional operating expenditure is around fifty six point two four million. So when they seed capital, see a surplus, why can you not provide a subsidy for an extra two years? The next question is on zero five one on participating in the GBA to in further participation of accounting profession and auditors. So the sector has been discussing with the FSTB and also the Financial Reporting Council to try to attract more talents into the area. And this is on par with my question. In the administration's response, it just mentioned that there are many different measures such as exemptions under CEP and there are one thousand eight hundred applications, but then due to various reasons, there are only a few hundred professionals that are qualified to work on the mainland. And so that can not effectively support the industry. So I'd like to ask if there are any plans to promote further participation of the accounting profession auditors in the development. Thank you, Mr. Wong, for your questions. Well, this is actually a common goal to try to enhance the accounting profession. Mr. Wong has always been interested in this, but then we also need to look into the regulatory regime. We cannot only look at one number and say that there are still around a two hundred million reserves and that's enough. We need to look into whether there's sustainability in our regulations. I hope that you will all support what we are doing, that the fees will be made based on twenty twenty one. And I hope that I'll be able to have member support and that you would understand where we're coming from. GBA development on how we can better promote the industry. We are continuously working on facilitating our accounting profession north. So we have been talking with consultants and stakeholders with the Ministry of Finance. But as to how we can help them in a concrete manner, well, we lost out in from Tianhai and we hope that by taking it step by step, we'll be able to have a larger coverage on the mainland and we're going to work with members to improve this. Dr. Wong Yun San, thank you. I'd like to follow up on FSTB FS zero five six, my own question on the carbon market opportunities on the fintech market. On the carbon market, I understand that the steering committee has already set up a paper with four main areas of development. So it is said that you're looking into the best initiatives. We were going to discuss this in the panel, but we don't have a timeline yet. I wanted to ask the steering committee whether a timetable is in place. I'd like to further understand the second direction in going for a unified carbon market with the mainland. Is there any particular industry? Because according to my understanding, in Hong Kong, electric companies already have a fuel mix monitoring and regulation. Therefore, they may not want to participate in this carbon market. Also, a quick question on fintech on the working with a blockchain, with the People's Bank of China and the HKMA. Would this trade finance blockchain platform also work together with the POB digital commercial a digital currency? Because if we are also able to work with the CBDC, then that would be more effective.
Secretary, thank you, Chair. I will take the first question and for the second, I will ask the Hong Kong Amaiter supplement on unified carbon market. While we are now arranging for a time to brief the panel on this. I think Mr. Wong is correct. Why do we have to look to GB after Hong Kong's market is too small? And to to vitalize a market, there must be scale of economy. In particular, a carbon exchange involves a long-term carbon credits trading. We need a big market. And Hong Kong has a small economy, but then our capitalization of the stock market is dozen times of our economy. We're able to do that because we enjoy advantages in regulation and also capital from the mainland and the world. So we must tap into the GBA market. For details, we can exchange views with members at the FA panel. We need to involve more participants and projects as regards trading. Can Hong Kong MA supplement? Hong Kong MA? Dr. Wong asked whether this financing market will consider digital currency. Now, we are now working on a multi-currency bridge. We will study that. We'll see whether we can provide more information to encourage the flow of capital across boundaries. We'll consider that. Dr. Andy Ho, thank you, Chair. I'd like to follow up on a question or reply oh two two. Regarding the Future Fund and also the Growth Portfolio for Hong Kong, I have high expectations for them. I hope they can help to promote diversification in our economy. I hope it will be a tool made by the government. I have a few suggestions for the secretary. First, on investment of the Hong Kong Growth Portfolio, we should not just invest in high-end and high-tech projects because this is not something accessible to general members of the public. We should consider projects of high with commercial benefits. They can promote employment around for the middle class and can also benefit our younger generation. And as for the GBA Investment Fund, well, Hong Kong has always been the greatest source of investment in the mainland. We have never stopped our investment in GBA on various fronts. We have to understand that Hong Kong is part of the GBA and so Hong Kong should not be excluded from investment of the GBA Investment Fund. We can invest in enterprises in Hong Kong and we can also encourage high INT industries such as Huawei to come to operate in Hong Kong. The Future Fund is of a larger scale. We can invest in overseas companies. We can also require such companies to set up offices in Hong Kong so that we can bring back industries to Hong Kong. Hong Kong MA can be, can do the first round selection of GPs. I hope the fund can help the administration to adjust its philosophy in governance. So Hong Kong can be a growth area. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Hong, for your views. I think we have many points in common. Dr. Hong referred to a few areas, including how we can ensure that such investment will not just bring us financial return, but other externalities and also social benefits. In fact, this is why we have this requirement for a Hong Kong nexus, which is a very broad. In choosing GPs, as I said, we have to consider the commitment for Hong Kong and how we can evaluate the benefits afterwards. These benefits can cover a few areas as mentioned by Dr. Hong, the number of employees, how they use Hong Kong as a platform, and whether their core functions of business place in Hong Kong. These can be our considerations in making an investment choice. So we will consider Dr. Hong's suggestions to see how this five billion dollars can be well used under our Hong Kong Growth Portfolio under the Future Fund. Can the administration be more involved in the investment by GPs to promote economic development in Hong Kong? I think Dr. Hong is among many views received by us and in making a decision, in making investment decisions, we want to be at arm's length and that's why we need to employ GPs. Now, if how we can do it outside this framework, I think we can exchange views of Dr. Hong later. Dr. Mr. Holden Chow, the last speaker. Thank you, Chair. Am I coming through? Yes. Thank you. I'd like to follow up on reply serial number FSTB oh four nine. This is about the hundred percent loan guarantee. The SME financing guarantee scheme now, and also the hundred percent loan guarantee for individual scheme. I think Mr. Li made a very good point and I hope the administration can step up enforcement. Now, for the hundred percent loan guarantee for individual schemes, I'm sure is useful in helping SMEs to tie over the difficult period given the pandemic, but then there are unscrupulous intermediaries urging people to apply for loans and afterwards use the money for other purposes, not for supporting their businesses, but for buying property, etc. I think there is a certain degree of fraud here. Last year, the administration carried out a major enforcement operation. A few arrests were made. A syndicate was involved in setting up such fraud and then people were arrested. Hope the administration will continue to step up enforcement because these unscrupulous intermediaries are still doing this. And of course, they are black sheep for SMEs that genuinely take our money to help their own businesses. That's okay, but if there are bad apples who use these loans to buy properties, for instance, there must be a mechanism to take enforcement and let the public know to enhance the deterrent effect. These bad apples and also unscrupulous intermediaries should be punished. Otherwise, for those who genuinely need the money to salvage their own businesses, for those law-abiding businessmen, well, it's really unfair. I hope the administration can respond in this regard. Thank you. Secretary, thank you, Mr. Chow. I think Mr. Chow and Mr. Li Tong Kwong are consistent in ensuring us that the money can really help people. In uh ensuring us that the uh money can really help people we want to help. Now, oh as a preventive measure, we can publicize the purpose of the scheme as set by Mister Lee from Hong Kong MA. They're going to step up publicity and. How can we ensure that the loans take out uh will be spent on the uh intended purpose? Yes, we will uh ensure this and if there is any fraudulent practices. We will take very strict enforcement to ensure that people will not uh suffer. As a result of uh some unscrupulous elements. So we will gatekeep properly to ensure that the scheme can achieve its desired purpose. Just one more. Sentence. I think we should uh do regular samplings. I'm sure you have intelligence if you spot abnormalities, I think you should uh investigate, thank you. Any supplements from the secretary, yes, will follow up afterwards. Now, uh this session ends here. Please come back at ten twenty for the next session, thank you.